(Inaudible)
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. In compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines relative to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting and reorganization meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations. Well, I should say, sorry.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell? Is absent. Mr. Riker?
Present.
Mr. Justwicki is absent. Mr. Luise? Ms. Britto? Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Haring? Mr. Hudak? Mr. Ricardi? They are out of order, my apologies.
Madam Secretary, I understand that there should be a motion for executive session. With the pleasure of the board, I'll read that. Also just want to make note, I believe Dr. Campbell's at least attempting to come in, and she will participate by phone if she cannot get in. But let me read, if I may, the executive session resolution. Whereas the planning board of the township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. And whereas the planning board provides that... Strike that. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution. And whereas it is necessary for the planning board of the township of Jackson to discuss in the session not open to the public certain matters related to items authorized and designated as follows: matters requiring to be confidential, personnel matters, and current litigation matters. I would ask therefore through the secretary to call for a motion and second and vote to go into executive session to discuss those matters, please.
Can I have a motion to move for an executive session?
A motion.
Can I have second?
Second.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell? Not in yet. Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
And I'm in, so it's yes.
Thank you.
So, if I may, members of the public, including myself, Mr. Peters and Mr. Clea, we're going to step out to allow the board to discuss matters in executive session. So we're all going to have to please step out, thank you.
Ridiculous.
Denise or Senior Lesson?
Hello. Hi. I see that Adam Pfeffer is still on the screen. Just so Anthony knows. All right. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Michelle, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Would you mind disconnecting from your Zoom and just participating via your server?
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman. Could I have a nomination for the board chairman, please?
Director of the nomination, Robert Hudak.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, so during executive we had nominations for professionals and the chairman.
We have added a number of dates to our schedule to try to accommodate our current backlog and board orders. So, Mr. Gertner?
Yeah. First of all, I didn't have the opportunity to interrupt. I thank the board for my reappointment as well, appreciate it. It's been an honor to serve, so, thank you. With, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask through, and through the chair, to make a motion to add the following meeting dates to begin at 7:30 PM in this municipal complex, in this municipal building. February 22nd. March 15th. I would strike that, March 22nd, we have the 15th around. April 26th. And May 10th, again, those meetings to start at 7:30. And I'd ask respectfully, Mr. Chairman at the Board Direct, the Board Professionals, and includes Board Secretary, to come back to you at the next meeting, meeting in January 25th, with recommendations regarding scheduling of future meetings.
May I have a motion to adopt those, the official dates and times of our official meetings?
So moved.
Roll.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. That's, that was a reorder process for 2021. Okay, so, payment of doctor reporting secretary for this evening, January 11th, 2021. Roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval minutes of December 21st, 2020, our regular meeting?
So moved.
Uh, they do have to be carried, they were not submitted.
They weren't submitted. Any special engineering and planning matters?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. None of the secrets.
Okay, courtesy review for solar array installation, Board of Education, at 11 locations. Let me just quickly read these block and lot numbers into the record. Block 16601, Lot 10. Block 5806, Lot 2. Block 2604, Lot 838. Block 21301, Lot 9. Block 7111, Lot 34. Block 13001, Lot 49. Mr. Clea, as usual, you want to lead off?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are courtesy reviews for the Board of Education. Based on that, we didn't really prepare a detail, any detailed engineering reports. And we're leaving to the applicant, who is representative, to briefly describe the, the projects at the, at the different locations.
Mr. Chairman, we also did not do a review, a report on the courtesy. We'd ask them to reconcile what's required under the land use law, so that the board can make the recommendation that's necessary. Thank you.
Yes, they were, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for asking. I'm going to just briefly take, take the floor. So, these matters as capital projects are available to be heard via courtesy review. Because the projects themselves, on each rooftop, so to speak, are substantially similar, and because they are, in fact, is what, what's commonly called as courtesy review, the recommendation to the, to the board, even though there are separate lots and blocks, and they were all individually noticed, the applicant is asked that they be able to present in general what the projects are. Obviously, the board can ask general or specific questions. Matter can be open to the public as, as required, but that there need not be, unlike a, an app, a, a development application, there need not be separate evidence for each lot and block. I have no issue with that.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, good evening. Hi, good evening, Chair, members of the board, Board Professionals. My name is Jared Pape, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Heilburn Pape. And this evening, I'm here on behalf of Advanced Solar Products and the Board of Education. As noted, this is a courtesy application, so it's not a, you know, a full-on formal application. But we do appreciate the opportunity to give an overview of what this proposed project is. And, so what I intend to do is just give a very brief overview of, of all the applications, or all of the projects. As Mr. Gertner noted, there's multiple sites, they're all substantially the same, so I'm going to describe them in a, you know, in some fashion. We do have representatives from Advanced Solar Products here that can answer more technical question, questions, as well as a representative from the Board of Education, the, the owner of the properties. So, just by way of a brief overview, what's being proposed here is 11 separate rooftop solar facilities at, at six different properties, so six different block and lots, all of which are owned by the, the Board of Education. There, all of the systems, as I mentioned, are, to be installed on the roof. They're to be installed so that they would not be visible from, from street level. They're designed to specifically power the facility on which they sit, so they're designed to accommodate the electric demand, or portion of the electric demand of that, of that facility. There's no storage component, there's no battery component to this, and as I mentioned, there, there really is no equipment that would be visible from, from street level. So, tha- that's just a brief overview of, of what these projects are. If there are more specific questions, I would refer to Scott Musich, who's here on behalf of the solar developer. So, with that, I will open up to questions. And as noted, we, we did notice, so there, there's questions from the public, we're happy to address those.
So, Mr. Pape, why don't you call the engineer up, he's, he's got to give a general description of how those, how they're going to be placed on the rooftops?
Sure, yeah.
Et cetera.
Sure, so.
That's some testimony.
Yeah, so, Mr. Musich?
Thank you for your time. These system-
Grant, excuse me, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony information you're about to give represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation?
Scott Musich, M U S I C H. I am the Director of Construction for Advanced Solar Products, based out of Flemington, New Jersey.
Are you an engineer, sir?
I am not an engineer. I've, I've been in the solar industry for 10 years, I've been on the construction side exclusively. I work very closely with engineers. I work very closely with manufacturers. I've worked in the procurement side of the industry. I've built probably in excess of about 100 megawatts of work in my, in my body of work that I've done since I've been in the industry. This particular project, we are going to be doing a ballasted system that will be sitting on top of the roof. Hearing to all code requirements, setbacks, fire department rules, building electrical code requirements. Structural capacity of the buildings is, is being analyzed and will, systems will be sitting on top of the roof, held down by a ballasted system, and low profile. And that's pretty much it, it's a very simple process, all the inverters and equipment will be located on the roof. We will be going down either through the roof or over the side of the roof to come into the electrical room of the buildings.
May I ask, just to help the record a little bit, is it the purpose of the Board of Ed, or the goal of Board of Education that each, that the solar panels on top of each building will produce the electric, electrical need for the building themselves?
Yes, the systems will offset approximately 80% of the facility's electrical bill, so nothing, they will meet, they will not be overproducing what the buildings will be consuming.
And have you done a rough estimate for the taxpayers of Jackson Township, or the Board of Education, as to what that savings will produce?
We do have an analysis of that.
All right, can you tell us?
Uh, I don't have my speakers.
Oh, all right. Sorry.
Approximately, yes, approximately 80%.
Surplus, and there's no utilization of those energies to be put into other places?
No, they will not.
Um, are you the company that does the energy, or you're just doing the equipment installation?
We're doing the equipment installation, yes.
Who monitors the energy usage, then?
Uh, well.
Is it J C P L, or?
Yes, this is all, the way this industry is structured, P S E N G has their requirements, or J C P L has their requirements of what, they have to approve what we are installing at, at, so that we have already gone through that, we already have our approvals through the utilities. We received all those, we, we cannot proceed forward without those approvals, we have already received all of those.
Okay, so there's no storage of the energy, it's simply?
There is not.
Utilization day-to-day?
That's correct. So, at the end of the calendar year, we will offset approximately 80% of the, of the annual usage of the systems.
So, that means during the summer, when school is not in session, these things are generating electricity that goes back into the grid, and the Board of Education receives offsets to their bills, is that how it works?
That's correct, but at, at the facilities, there's still refrigeration running and, and, you know, loads that will be continuing through the summer, so it's a small amount, yes, that is correct.
And what about safety of this system with being torn off the roof from high winds? Is electrical components coming down the side of the buildings, and is this all?
Everything is all, yep, there's, everything has been designed, the industry has grown dramatically over the time period to address such concerns of safety. The systems will not operate unless they have grid power, so if there's a loss of power, if they lose grid power, the system's shut down. That's by design, that's a code requirement. So, those things are in place, there's a lot of safety measures in place. If any part of the system goes down, breaker strip, or the system shuts down in that section. Kind of an issue like that, yeah, the system shuts down.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Theoretical start of construction, from your permit to your PTO, your permission to operate on a given school, can you give me an idea how long this is going to take? Once you get your permit to, when this gets activated, starts producing money on either SREC or TREC, whatever? I guess you're in-
The entire project, portfolio, the whole portfolio?
No, just a given, a given school.
Uh, well, they're varying in sizes, some of them are as small as 6 KW on campus buildings, some are as big as 900 KW on, against middle school. So, on a larger system, like, like the 900 KW system, from start to finish, two, three months probably would be about correct, I would say, for completion. Then there's a utility timeframe for them to give us approvals, that usually takes two weeks to a month, depending on COVID-type situation like we're right now. It's typically two weeks to 30 days for, for utilities.
And what's your forecast on the pipeline for the materials? Is, is that stable now with COVID?
It is stable. There's, there's a, a little bit of a, of supply delays due to volume of things that are moving right now across the supply lines. But we already have modules, they're going to be landing actually in the next month, we have all our modules here. Racking is all domestic, inverters, domestic, so a lot of those things are already here in place, so there aren't no supply issues.
Very good.
We've had full structural reports for every school. A lot of the schools have new roofs on them now, they have new roof replacements, most of the schools have gone through roof replacement, this was coming up on, on the, back, on completion. Yes.
Punching holes in new roofs to mount these things, is there any concern that?
The system is mostly ballasted, the only reason we would have to go through the roof is if, we're, to go through with pipes to get into an electrical room, our preference is always to go over the side of the building and come into the electrical room on the outside. So, it, it depends on each individual situation, what would require. Any roof work is done by a certified approved rooper that's approved both by the school and by the roofing manufacturer. We work very closely with the roofing manufacturers to make sure that we adhere to all warranties. Nope, not. If there is, we address that and take care of it, yep. Sign all the overburden waivers with the roofing manufacturer, take on responsibility. Anyone else?
You have any other witnesses?
I have an attorney, we have a representative of American Insurance and Mass Solar and the Board of Education. Here, if there are further questions, but no other one.
This is board, 2015. You okay? Just one question? Just one, though?
I'm not sure, uh, address it to you. I just had heard that the township is going to relinquish control of Rosenhour, is that true or not? Rosenhour Elementary?
Well, then you have to come up and you have to be sworn. Please. Sir, if you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony and information you're about to provide and give will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, please?
Edward Ostroff, O S T R O F F, on the vertical facilities for Jackson Township Education. We have no plans now or in the future to relinquish or sell the Rosenhour School.
Okay, I appreciate that information, thank you.
I mentioned earlier, and Mr. Gertner mentioned as well, we, we did notice, so if there were any questions from the public, obviously, virtually or physically, happy to address those as well.
Okay, this time I'd like to open it up to public comment. Do you have it, anyone that's, um, raising their hand?
Six attorneys.
No hands raised.
More hands raised. Any other questions? No, anyone care to make a motion?
Well, make a motion to close the public comment session.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone here to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Congratulations, gentlemen, thanks for coming out, we appreciate your patience with, with receiving.
Thank you very much, have a, have a good, a good evening.
Okay, um, next up, we have Block 3101, Lot 19, Larama LLC, J V's Diner. So, we need to carry that until January 25th, 2021. Have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, just because of virtual hearings and a slight change in DCA. Mr. Chairman's asking, please, that the board make a motion to carry Block 3101, Lot 19, to the January 25th, 2021 meeting, without the need for further notice. The public is directed to the municipal website and publication for login information.
Okay, I need a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And Wolf.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. We're going to skip over to Block 8601, Lot 41, 28 North Coats Bridge Road LLC. We need a motion to carry that application.
It's the same conversation. I apologize. Yes, Mr. Chairman has indicated, the chairman is asking for a note, for a motion and approval to carry this matter, Block 8601, Lot 41-28, to the January 25th, 2021 meeting, without the need of further notice of the applicant. The public is directed to municipal website and, and locations of publication for login information. I would note as a caveat that these matters are being carried to the 25th in all likelihood for further rescheduling pursuant to the board's previous motion about filling up application dates.
So again, it's a need a motion to carry this to the January 25th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Wolf.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. And lastly, before this evening, I have Block 21401, Lots 38, 39, and 40. Mount Hill, I'm not going to pronounce that. This is a preliminary and final long subdivision time extension. Mr. Clea?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Luise indicated this is a time extension request for a minor subdivision, Resolution 2018-14, granted minor subdivision approval so as to establish two new residential building lots on the subject property. Based on the provisions in the municipal land use law, the minor subdivision plat needed to be recorded in the Ocean County Clerk's Office by November 13th, 2018. The current application seeks to extend that time to record the minor subdivision plat. So some testimony from the applicant as far as the reasons behind the time extension request, as well as how long he would like the approval to be extended. That's all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer. Not sure if you could hear me?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From a planning perspective, the zoning of the property has not changed. It was originally in the R1 zone. It is still in the R1 zone. It's still a permitted use. We ask for some testimony indicating the reasons for the need to extend the timeframe.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Mr. Pfeffer, do you hear us?
Yes, I hear you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. As indicated, this application is for a time extension. And I guess at this time, if we can swear in, Mr. Borden. Also, I just want to thank you for allowing me to participate via virtual.
Board, if you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony information you're about to give represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, please.
Certainly. Ian Borden, B-O-R-D-E-N, President of Professional Design Services in Lakewood, New Jersey. I'm a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Been working in the civil engineering and planning field since graduation from Rutgers University in 1982. Thirty-seven years I've been working in the field. Thank you. So we'll be brief. Facts have been summarized primarily by your professionals. This is a three-lot subdivision. Does not create any new lots. We're just reorienting lot lines. It currently is three lots. And it will remain, and it will still be three lots. The zoning, as Mr. Peters stated, has not changed. It was R1 and continues to be R1. The, no changes have been made to the plan as approved by the board at all. The reason for the extension is that we are required to do roadway improvements to White Road, is a county road. And we're working out those final details with the county engineering staff. We would ask for an extension until June 30th of 2021 to allow us to complete that work and file the plat.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question, Mr. Borden, does that represent your last extension?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr.?
Please remember, it's a minor subdivision. There aren't statutory consecutive time extensions. Those are for major subdivisions. Minor subdivision, file in 190 days or either come back, ask for a time extension, or file a new application. So there aren't, there aren't any subsequent time extensions available.
Understood.
Mr. Pfeffer, anything to add? Okay. Or just now? No? Mr. Riker?
What would be the case if you didn't get these things worked out with the county by June 20?
As Mr. Peters said, we'd have to come back with a new application.
Is that, is that the limit on how far you can go? I have enough.
Yes.
All right. Good luck.
Yeah, there's no further extension beyond June 30th.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
What kind of extension are you looking for?
Just a time extension until June 30th of 2021. So what's it? Five months.
Okay. Any other questions? No?
Move to approve.
We need to check with the public first. Is there anyone? Your hand raised? No hand. Okay. Campbell, you made a motion?
Approve.
You're closing the public portion and approve.
On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Shell made a motion to approve. We have a second. Have a Wolf.
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi? Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all your appointments.
Have a good evening. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I get a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.